Welcome to the November ninth, two thousand twenty meeting of the Wilmington Board of Selectmen. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelve, twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, chapter thirty eight, section eighteen. And the governor's March fifteen, twenty twenty order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Members of the public who wish to watch and listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner. WCTV, channel nine, Comcast, Xfinity, channel thirty seven, Verizon, Firehouse, and livestream, wctv.org. This meeting of the Wilmington Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. But every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Members of the public who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may also do so via telephone by dialing one six four six five five eight. Eight six five six, and at your meeting ID, eight six one three three nine five three seven two four. Then press pound and press pound again at the next voice prompt. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the meeting designated for public comment. By following the steps previously noted, then press star nine on their telephone keypad. This will notify the meeting host that the caller wishes to speak. All callers using this feature will be placed in queue in the order of the Andrew prompts. In the event that despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide for real time access, we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as we are able. All votes will be roll call in alphabetical order, and I do want to thank John O'Neill of the town's IT department and our friends at WCTV. We go to roll call. Selectmen Bendel.
Here.
Selectmen Kyra.
Here.
Selectmen DePalma.
Present.
Selectmen Omahaoni.
Here.
The board did just reconvene from an executive session for the purposes of discussing collective bargaining strategy with respect to the American Federation of State Counties for Local employees, Local seventeen oh three, Unit Two. And the Wilmington Police Superiors Association, in accordance with Mass General Laws, chapter thirty eight, section twenty one, A three. As an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town as so determined by the chairman. And we did actually have to pass over due to time constraints, the minutes from April thirteen, twenty twenty, July twenty, twenty twenty, August seventeen, twenty twenty, and September fourteenth, twenty twenty. Uh, in accordance with Mass General Laws, chapter thirty eight, section twenty two. I'd ask that you all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance through the flag, United States of America. Intervent Obama.
Pledge of allegiance.
One nation, and God. Liberty, justice, law. We do have trends. We need other treasury warrants, numbers eighteen, eighteen A, nineteen, and nineteen A. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
The motion by Selectmen DePalma. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Omahaoni for a discussion. See none? We'll call for the votes. Selectmen Bendel.
Aye.
Selectmen Kyra.
Uh, yes.
Selectmen DePalma.
Yes.
And Selectmen Omahaoni.
Yes.
Aye, I am yes, unanimous. Next, we have the approval of minutes, September twenty eighth, two thousand twenty. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion by Mr. DePalma, second by Mr. Bendel. Discussion. See none? We'll call for the votes. Selectmen Bendel.
Aye.
Selectmen Kyra.
Yes.
Selectmen DePalma.
Yes.
Selectmen Omahaoni.
Yes.
And I am yes, unanimous. Next up is the minutes from October thirteen, twenty twenty. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
A motion by Ms. uh, Kyra, second by Mr. Bendel. Discussion. See none? Call for the votes. Selectmen Bendel.
Aye.
Selectmen Kyra.
Yes.
Selectmen DePalma.
Yes.
Selectmen Omahaoni.
Yes.
And I am yes, unanimous. Next, we go to our first appointments, uh, and I want to wish a happy but belated birthday to our health director, Shelly Newhouse. Uh, briefly, uh, we noticed that we are not meeting in either the town hall or the high school, uh, tonight in this, um. It's because after consultation with our health director, um, the town manager and I had a conversation earlier last week. And given, uh, the rising numbers of COVID positive individuals in our community, uh, it would be best not to, uh, risk having, hosting an event that's, uh, might accelerate any further spread. So we are joining you remotely. Uh, Ms. Newhouse, how are we doing?
We're doing okay. Not great. Uh, as of today, we have fifty-one active positives in town and well over a hundred in quarantine. Um, we, trends that I'm seeing are whole families are getting it. You know, one person brings it into the family and then the whole family eventually becomes positive. Um, I'm seeing the twenty to thirty year olds have, are getting it and there's no real rhyme or reason to why they're getting it. They have small gatherings. I wouldn't even call them like parties or anything, but just, they're just getting together and, and, you know, they get it from somebody else. And then they come home and then they bring it to their families and they're, that's how we're seeing just so many positives come up. Uh, one thing I did want to talk about tonight was the, the way that the Department of Public Health has changed their reporting of, um, cases. So if, John, if you could bring that, those two slides up that I sent you, that would be great. So right here, um, this, this is as of data from November fourth. So you'll see then the Wilmington line that we are in the yellow, which has changed from the previous week, we were in the red. And we're in the yellow because of the way that DPH is now changing their metric system, which I believe is a more realistic way of reporting. They're taking into account, um, our population, the community numbers, not, they're not adding in like, uh, what we would call a closed pod, um, numbers for like nursing homes, uh, things like that. So they're accurately representing the numbers that we're seeing in town. So based on the population base, if you look at the ne- the next slide, John, I'll show you. Thank you. So in order for a community to be in red, you have to, you'll see based on the population. So we would be in the middle column because our population is between ten and fifty thousand. So last week we were in the red, um, but not based on this metric system. So this week we changed to yellow because we have greater than ten average cases per, based on a per hundred thousand population. Or a greater than five percent positivity rate. So we are right now at a two point five five positivity rate, but we have a greater than ten average cases. So that puts us in the yellow. So in order to go in red, you have to have both. So if you look, the yellow is an or, but the red is an and, so you would have to have both. So we are rising in our numbers, so we'll see what happens this week. Um, the data will go until Thursday again, so we are going up and then we'll calculate and see if, if we tip up to the red. This map, uh, right now we're in, the state is at about a one point seven percent positivity rate, so we are higher than the state average. There was a lot more yellow communities than red communities, so we'll just have to keep an eye on that. It's, it's, we had a big change this week with the governor's new orders about masks and the curfew. Um, hopefully everyone is really participating and doing their part. I haven't gotten a lot of bad feedback from that. Everyone just kind of wants to do the right thing and stop this virus from spreading and making our numbers go up. I don't know. Does anyone have any questions?
Any members of questions? So, uh, Ms. Newhouse, I, I think, uh, it certainly, um, seems that there's probably a fair amount of additional work every time the state is changing how they're calculating things. Um, I, I, uh, I, cause I'm sure all my colleagues and many of us in the community have been following the, um, the metrics. And it's certainly surprising that our, our numbers, our, our rate for a hundred thousand jumped, I think, from eight point eight to twelve point eight. And our positivity rate, I think, went from like one point nine five percent to two point five five percent. Increases in both metrics, but we go from red to yellow. Uh, I can only imagine that that has caused you a great deal of, um, I guess, probably sucked up some of your time because you're having to continually, uh, learn a different system and then having to communicate with that with the individuals that you are, uh, reaching out to. But aside from spreads and infamities, have you seen any other trends or any other, um, behaviors that, that's, um, are, are making the situation more difficult?
Um, carpooling, so, um, it's, if you're not with your family member, then really you should be wearing a mask. So people that carpool together to work, we're, we're seeing, we've seen a little bit of trends in that, that, um, our numbers are rising. Other than that, it's, um, it's hard to say, you know, people all have their ideas of where they think they got it from, or, or some people just have no idea. Our nursing homes are doing great though. They're, uh, I don't have any cases, which is nice.
Did you see the Chief Kavanaugh is on? Do you want to give him the opportunity to chime in as to how his department is doing?
Oh, good evening. Uh, so like Shelley said, we, we've seen the, uh, the uptick coming across and, um. Unfortunately, we, we were able to kind of dodge a bullet in the beginning, but we got hit pretty hard this past time with, uh, both police and fire. Uh, dispatch also was not unscathed in this, so at one point, uh, fireside had seven total positives. We'd also quarantined another, uh, six or seven rather. So we were, we were at fourteen, which is about a little over a third of the department, uh, that was out of action for a period. Uh, the police had five positives. Um, many of them have, uh, let me think, I talked to Chief Jasmine, two of them have returned to work. We still have three out currently. Uh, all of my people are back except for one, and I have one dispatcher currently in quarantine. So it, it did reach across there. We, we worked with Shelley, we worked with DPH, trying to pinpoint how, um, how it kind of get into the station. But we obviously didn't come up with anything on that, but we, um, you know, we're trying our best, uh, to make sure that we're doing the right thing, that we're wearing masks, we're social distancing at work. Uh, unfortunately, it's not always the easiest thing to do in, in fighting a police work. But, um, you know, we're, we're doing our best and happy to say that most of our people have recovered and, uh, we're back to business as normal.
Um, but it's certainly good to hear that, um, almost everyone's recovered, Chief Kavanaugh. Um, and it's, uh, certainly this is the news that all of us have been hoping, uh, we'll be able to avoid, um, for the past eight months. But, uh, it seems like most folks are on the road to recovery. Uh, how has operations within the fire department been really since the start?
Well, since the beginning, since March, obviously we've changed where we do medical aids, uh, where the people, our people are masking up more. They're in Tyvek suits going into, uh, any of these COVID suspected or COVID positive, uh, facilities or homes. We're, we're actually, you know, our typical medical, we would have all, all four members, uh, the two ambulance people, the two injured people would have all gone into the, into the residence and, and tried to work together to, you know, ascertain information and move the patient. Now we're not doing that. We're using as little people as possible, uh, just to make sure that we don't contaminate more people than have to be contaminated. Where we've made a smaller kit, uh, they came up with a kit that's the very basics for vital signs to try to, um, you know, either confirm or, or deny whether or not someone is experiencing the COVID symptoms. Uh, so it's easier to decon. Um, the ambulance has been coming back from the hospital out of service so they can be decontaminated as well. So it really has been, uh, quite a bit different, the way that we operate because of this virus. And a lot of it is to make sure that we don't, A, contaminate our people, but B, we don't contaminate the next family that we pick up, one of their loved ones. So it's been a lot more time consuming, a lot more labor intensive, but, uh, we're getting through.
I'll open it up to the board for any questions or comments. Mr. Bendel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, good evening. I just wanted to, uh, thank Shelley and Chief Kavanaugh for the update and chief. Uh, like all my colleagues, very, very happy to hear that, uh, everyone at the fire station, police, uh, station are recovering well. So I wanted to thank you again for your service and, uh, wish you and your department continued well health. And Shelley, uh, same to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Eaton, um, just, uh, I want to echo, uh, Selectmen Bendel's, uh, comments and again, thank you both for what you're doing, uh, for the residents of Wilmington. And Shelley, just a, a quick question. You were very, um, pleased, I think, at the last meeting about the flu shots that you were giving out. Are you still giving them out and still getting that same response?
We are officially done giving out flu shots. I think we gave out well over seven hundred flu shots, um, this year, which is like quadruple what I normally do. Uh, everyone's been really great. I haven't had a lot of people call me, um, as of late, you know, looking for one. So if, we, we have a few, you know, in our back pocket, so if anyone still needs some, they can call us. But other than that, I would encourage people to, you know, try CBS, Target, or their doctor's office.
Thank you. Thank you both again.
Selectmen DePalma.
Excuse me?
Do you want to ask any questions or make any comments?
No, uh, just I'm glad to see you getting back to health, chief, you and the PD, and I, uh, I wish you well in the, in the future.
Thank you.
So, um.
Sure. I had to just hopefully a quick question, um, for either Shelley or the chief. I know that the protocols changed. Um, Governor Baker had implemented kind of backtracking a little bit with the size of crowds inside and outside, as well as the mask, the kind of updated mask rules that we should be wearing them all the time outside. Um, and I just didn't know if you would take a minute just to remind everyone of that in case they didn't hear about it from that press conference.
Sure. If, if you're out in public, you have to wear a mask, so think about being out in the public. So you're walking by yourself, you know, you're in some trails or whatever, that's one thing, but you should always have your mask with you and be able to put it on if you need to. If you think you're going to be crossing paths with people, um, it's just good practice to always have it. It's just, that's the more important thing. It's really having it on in public, so, and that's pretty much all the time for everyone. Um, the reduced capacity for events, um, has changed and I've gone over where I think that that would be, we'd be affected by that, which would be like sporting events, um, and games and, and things like that. So we have, we pretty much have that under control. There's still lots and lots of complaints coming in daily from businesses and, and from people, um, really just wanting to make sure that the businesses are doing the right thing. Um, that's, that's a ton, a ton of work. I mean, I just can't, sometimes I can't get to them all in one day. It's just impossible. But they're all looked, looked into, they're all, um, and people are really good. I haven't really run into anyone that's, you know, defiant. They're, they've been really good, which is nice.
Good. Thank you.
Right, well.
Mr. Chair, if I could just, uh, add, uh, maybe a question and a co- a comment, uh, certainly as has been mentioned many times, the, uh, level of activity that Shelley and her staff are under here is just tremendous with all the social, with the contact tracing and, uh, trying to keep the businesses apprised of the current changes and all. Uh, Shelley, can, can you speak to the current situation in terms of the contact tracing, how that's going? Are folks generally being cooperative or are we getting any pushback in that area?
No, people have been really, really good. Um, it's, that's a huge undertaking, the especially challenging with the schools being open now. Um, there's always a time lapse between when you get a positive case and then when you start to call people and notify them and then call their contacts. So there can be a big span of time there and then, and then it takes time to call everyone and go over things with each individual person. Um, and then they always have questions, so the contact tracing is just a, it's a tremendous amount of work and it takes, I mean, one case can take hours just to do, to contact trace everyone that they think they've been in contact with. And you kind of just talk to them and go over their days and who they were with and what do they think they've been doing? So, um, we have three people that do that for our, for the Board of Health, myself, Tracy, and Winona. Um, and it's, it's going along, but it's, um, you know, you're contact tracing in the early morning, you're doing it at night, you're doing it on the weekends, it's just whenever. You know, cases don't come in at ten o'clock Monday through Friday. They, I mean, I get cases, they come in at four in the morning, six in the morning, ten at night. Uh, you know, twenty-four hours a day, cases are coming in. So, um, but it's been go- I mean, it's, that's the hardest part, but it's, it's been going okay. People are so far so good.
The only other comment I would have just, uh, in, in terms of the fire, police, and so on, is that, uh, obviously, uh, we're, we're glad to see that, uh, folks there are, are on the road to recovery. That, you know, one of the challenges obviously is, um, the staffing impacts when we have people quarantined or, uh, in a, um, a COVID positive situation. So, uh, that will have implications for our, uh, our overtime budgets, uh, some of that, and it'll be the chief, uh, and I've had conversations about, uh, the degree to which we can, uh, cover some of that with the, um, CARES Act funds. But, um, really, uh, there are impacts from, uh, on the overtime.
I do want to thank, uh, both of you in your respective departments, uh, as well, um, certainly, uh, eight months in and things are getting busier, uh, for both of you in your respective departments. So, uh, keep up the fantastic work. It is very much appreciated, uh, and it's going to be, certainly increasing need as, as our numbers continue to take back up, so thank you both. Right, so we will move to our, uh, next appointments, uh, with a complete absence of, uh, a perfect segue. We do welcome Officer Ferbush from Wilmington Police Department. Uh, good evening, sir. How are you?
Good evening, everyone. How are you?
I can assume that you are in the, uh, public safety building right now.
That I am.
I applaud you for wearing your mask, uh, while you are in there and certainly thank you for continuing to plug away, but, uh, what do you have for us here tonight?
Well, thank you for everyone for letting me come in. Um, I'm here just to bring up, uh, this year's Santa parade. Uh, this is a tradition that we've been doing. This will be our sixth year. Uh, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with a core group that helps run this. Uh, there's a lot of stuff getting canceled over the next few months as far as holidays, and that was actually one of the things that came up was, uh, would we want to cancel this event? Uh, we actually decided to modify it and we were looking, uh, to bring it up to you guys. Uh, we're going to look into doing just the parade this year. Uh, as you know, normally we stop off at, uh, different schools and town buildings. Uh, it gives a chance for the kids to see Santa Claus and sit on his lap and sing Christmas carols. And we have a, uh, bunch of characters that are out there that will, we take photos like Frosty the Snowman and, and elves and things like that. Obviously with COVID, that's going to be a logistical nightmare. Um, so unfortunately, we had, we made the decision that we were going to cut the stops this year. And just do a strictly parade where we'd be driving around, um, to try to get everyone to do social distancing and mask requirements at the stops is just going to be too hard. So, uh, we, obviously, two thousand twenty has not been the best year for many of us. We wanted to do some sort of normalcy and at least still try to have this town event. Uh, and we plan on driving through a whole bunch of neighborhoods. We are going to be still trying to collect toys for the fire department's toy program and food for the food pantry. Uh, we do have COVID completely in mind, um, to include anytime any one of the staff members in regards with COVID. I, as, as, as far as the parade goes, will be fully masked, fully, um, gloved. Any town employee that's assisting in this will be following town policies as far as wearing masks, gloves, and other protective gear. Uh, normally we would collect these kind of, uh, toys and food and lettuce for the troops, uh, at each stop. Uh, we're going to try to collect it en route. We've done this years in the past where people have flagged down the truck and we've collected the toys and such for, uh, the different groups that we collected for. Uh, so we're going to have to try to change our way of doing things, obviously with two thousand twenty, but we're, we're still going to be doing that. It's going to be Sunday, December sixth. We're going to be kicking off at, uh, nine AM. We're going to try to hit as many streets as we can. Hopefully, uh, hopefully, like you said, weather permitting, obviously, the last few years, you know, if it snows too much or we get icy conditions, we do have to think of everyone's safety, including the public. Um, but we hope to get to as many streets as we can this year and, and try to see, get as many smiles and as many happy people as we can. Uh, obviously, like I said, this is a rough year, so we want to try to put some people, some smiles on people's faces.
Well, Officer Ferbush, I, I applaud the initiative to continue doing this because I think, uh, while certainly it's always been appreciated, I think this year even more so. You know, I think, uh, that given the number of events that have been, uh, canceled or modified for kids in town, uh, having this is not just a, uh, a sense of a recent tradition, you know, feeling of that. But, uh, having Santa drive by, uh, certainly for the younger kids, going to be particularly appreciated. So I do want to thank you for that. I presume that, uh, there still will be, uh, the unofficial Santa tracker on Facebook as you folks are leaving your way to, to town.
That is correct. That is correct.
Appreciate that as someone who needs to coordinate nap times. I did want to open it up to members for any questions. Mr. Bendel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, you, Officer Forbush, I want to just publicly thank you for, uh, taking the lead on this once again to, uh, keep this great Christmas tradition alive for your hometown, so I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, uh, too would like to thank Officer Ferbush for, for putting this together again, along with, I'm sure, so many other people that he has on his committee volunteering their time. Uh, it, it's nice to have this continue, um, for the kids in town. It really is. It's modified perfectly. I, I congratulate you on, on what you're doing. Um, and thank you. Thank you for, uh, for what you do.
Thank you, and I really got to thank all the volunteers and all the people, all the town departments, you know, Jeff Hall, everyone that just always helps me just get this together. And this year is going to be an obstacle, but I couldn't do it without, without everyone's help. I really do appreciate it.
Selectmen DePalma?
Yes. Yes, congratulations. Uh, you're going to put a smile on a lot of kids' faces. Uh, it's, uh, I know it's going to be tough for you, uh, but just remember the children, they'll be the ones that'll be dreaming the next night. Thank you.
Ms. Omahaoni?
Just, you know, it's a great, it's great to see some, some sense of normalcy, uh, going on. We, we have so many. We, we have so many things that have changed this year, so many things that are going to be changing around these holidays. So thank you for continuing to do that. And as always, if there's anything we can do to help support it, if you, if there's anything you need, don't hesitate to reach out because we're here, we're here for that.
Well, thank you.
Officer Ferbush, again, this is another one of, another initiative of the police department that you're involved with to help really reach out to the community and very, is very much appreciated. I did want to, unless there's any objections from other board members, I did want to take our board to consider item out of order. It's number 12. It's the board to consider approving the request to conduct the Santa Parade on Sunday, December 6th, 2020. The request was made by Santa Claus. So I will entertain a motion.
So, motion.
Motion by Ms. Omahony, executive by Mr. DePaume. Further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Bendel? Yes. Mr. Kyron?
Yes.
Mr. DePaume?
Yes.
Ms. Omahony?
Yes.
And I will make a unanimous, quite the shot. So thank you, Mr. Ferbush.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Hall, Communications.
Yes, so first on the docket here is an email from Selectman Bendel. And I'll defer to Mr. Bendel to offer an update on the senior center project.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. And Mr. Chairman, without objection, I'd just like to read this into the record.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. To my colleagues, on Tuesday, October 27th, the senior center OPM discussed their final recommendation to the town manager. Committee had a healthy discussion about each of the four finalists. Interviewed and detailed each of their reference checks. Each member was asked to rank order their four finalists. And in the end, the choice was overwhelmingly clear when each member ranked project planning professionals were P3 as the top choice. And I should note, it was actually unanimous vote. A vote was made to recommend P3 as the OPM for the potential new senior center to the town manager. And we agreed to send a letter of thanks to each of the three finalists who were interviewed but not chosen. And the committee agreed that all four of the finalists were very fine firms. But each member felt that P3 was the best fit for Wilmington. So I want to thank our IT Director and WCTV for uploading the videos online. They're available on the WCTV YouTube page for all to see. And all of our reference checks had very high praise for P3. And P3 has extensive municipal experience, but more specifically experience with building senior centers for other communities in Massachusetts such as Westfield, Greenfield, Rockland and Kingston. And their entire portfolio can be viewed on their website, HTTPS colon backslash P-dash-three-inc.com. I'd like to thank each of my fellow members of the OPM Committee. It was a pleasure to work with all of them. And the members gave a lot of their time and effort to the search, so they need to be applauded. And I really appreciate the time they spent looking at this. And at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions that board members might have.
Mr. Chair, I don't have a question. I just have a comment. If that's okay?
Sure.
I just wanted to thank Mr. Bendel for the updates, for continuing to update us. I know I had requested it at some point in the past, and I just really appreciate, given kind of the pandemic and everything we've been through, that the committee was able to work so quickly and efficiently in interviewing the prospects and checking their backgrounds and making the decision that, that, the making the recommendation that was made so, so quickly amidst all of this. I know it was always a concern that there would be delays, given everything that we're kind of dealing with. And I really do appreciate the hard work as well as, as the updates that you've been giving us along the way.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And Mr. Chair, if I could just add one other note that might be useful to this committee is that Daniel Pallata is the Principal Director of the PT Group. And he has extensive municipal experience. He's a former chairman of this town's planning board. He's the former town moderator and a former selectman in his town. So he's got some experience in navigating town meetings, and I thought that was worth noting, so.
Mr. Hall, he's certainly a glutton for punishments, so I hope to beat him up on the contracts.
So just speaking of that, I did have a conversation with him today, George Hooper and I did. And we have an arrangement for the services. As you recall, this really comes in two phases. The first phase for the OPM is to bring us through the feasibility study and schematic design. So we will be in a position to have cost estimates, to have a, a design, at least a preliminary design of the layout and of the facility. And so I will be getting a contract out to, to P3 this week. And one of the first thing that, that he will be doing, Dan Pallata, will be putting together the request for qualifications for the designer, the architect, who will work with the town to develop the facility and also work with us to identify the best site. So that is work in progress. Next, under Communications, this is an email from Selectman Omahony with an update on the MBTA Advisory Board. And so I will defer to Selectman Omahony.
Sure. So I apologize. I attended my first MBTA Advisory Board meeting on November 4th. And I sent kind of a brief update via email to the chair and Mr. Hall noting that I had lost my internet connection at one point. Thankfully, they actually post all of their meetings, the virtual meetings they've been posting on their website. So I was able to review the whole meeting, and I'd like to just kind of give you the highlights of the meeting, if that's okay. So the Advisory Board has been in existence for quite some time. There's 177 communities involved in it. But they are getting organized, finally, as, as they put it. So what they would like to do is create a schedule for 2021 of the meeting dates. Right now, basically, meetings are scheduled at the end of the current meeting for the next meeting. And they want to make that a little bit more organized so that everyone who's on the Advisory Board, as well as the municipalities that they're representing, have a better idea as to when they meet. They're going through a strategic review of both internal operations and external functions of the board. So that will include things like a review of the board's mission statement and the purpose to change as the MBTA has changed. And in that vein, they've actually just created, I thought they were revising the bylaws. I read them. And I was trying to figure out what had changed, but they actually never had bylaws before. So they, they just initiated Advisory Board bylaws, which I can send a link. They are available on their website. I can send a link to the, the members of the board as well as Mr. Hall, if you're interested in looking at them. For our purposes, the two kind of highlights of the bylaws that I think are most relevant to us is that they have weighted voting. So Wilmington gets like 1.5 votes because of the number of commuters we have that go through and that we have two stations. Other towns get less, other, other cities and towns get more. So it's not just one vote, one, you know, one municipality gets one vote. It's actually weighted voting. That has a base, that has a criteria that are in the bylaws. And the other thing I know this had come up is if multiple members of the same community can be on the MBTA Advisory Board and per the bylaws, the only representatives can either be the town manager, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, or an appointee from the Board of Selectmen. So I think that kind of answers our earlier questions as if there can be, if there can be multiple members. Since I am now the appointee, I would be the only one representing the town of Wilmington. Should I not be able to attend, I could have either Mr. Hall or Mr. Eaton attending, vote in my stead. But that would be the extent of that. The other kind of things that I just wanted to take a second to note, through the bylaws, they're now creating some subcommittees that they've had unofficially formed over the years about service, the ferries, a finance committee. They just named a treasurer for the first time of this Advisory Board. And there is going to be a supplemental meeting on November 16th that I will be attending virtually that will talk about service disruptions and service changes. I know that's been something that has been asked of me to try to, to get more information about. And the MBTA General Manager, Steve Pufftak, will be available on that Zoom on November 16th to discuss kind of what they're anticipating are going to be service changes that could potentially impact Wilmington. So I would ask, if you want to add me to the November 23rd agenda, I can certainly give you an update at that time. But I would just note again, I'll send you all the link to their website because it actually includes all of their minutes, which we've asked about, and I think we got some of. It has all, any Zooms that they've had, which have not been consistent, but the most recent one that I attended is actually available. And any other information you might have about the Advisory Board, including the, the new bylaws, are on that.
Thank you, Ms. Omahony. We look forward to hearing an update in two weeks on any service changes that might affect Wilmington.
Next, under Correspondence is a letter from Eric Hockey, who is the attorney that represents the WWI Wilmington-Wilburn Intermodal and the NET. This, as you recall, is an ongoing quarterly update that both the town of Wilmington and the proponent is required to provide to the Surface Transportation Board. Not a lot has changed as, as been in the case, the case for the last several quarters. I think there, everybody is waiting to see what the final outcome of the EPA rehabilitation plan is. It was noteworthy in the correspondence from Mr. Hockey that they, he does talk in a limited fashion about making alterations to their plans, an expanded version of a proposed warehouse with bulk transfer, storage of retail and other commodities. So it appears they may be making some modifications, I would expect at some point in the near term. Once the EPA finalizes their plan, that there'll be a conversation between the town and this group. And then the next memo, similar, this is the memo from the town written by Dan Deutsch, our special counsel for Olin, essentially indicating that it's, it's really in large measure a wait and see for EPA to finalize their plan. Next, under Correspondence is a memorandum from me to the Town and School Advisory Committee that has been put in place to review candidates for the town school admin building. It lays out the schedule. There was a request for qualifications that was posted in various locations, as was the case with the prior RFQ that went out on October 28th. And there, just for people's information, I would reference the individuals that are serving on this committee. George Hooper, who is the Chair of the Permanent Building Committee, Diane Allen, also Permanent Building Committee Member, Paul Mulroney, Permanent Building Committee, Jack Holloway, Permanent Building Committee, Mike Kachuk, Permanent Building Committee, Selectman Kevin Kyra is the Selectman's Designee, Steve Bjork, School Committee Designee, John Doherty from Finance Committee Designee, and Paul Regiro, Assistant Superintendent of Admin and Finance at the School Department. So the request for qualifications is, responses are due by the 19th of November at 2:00 PM. Once that deadline passes and the proposals are submitted, we will collate them and make them available for the members on the committee to pick up. Again, very same process that was done for the, the prior project with the senior center. And I also included in my memo to committee members some potential dates in December. The first meeting would really be for this group to get together and in the interim period between the time they get their proposals in this meeting, to review all the proposals and come up with a short list for the purposes of an interview. So it's really following the same track as the, the senior center. Next, under Communications is a memo to the board with regard to the Route 38 and Wilmington Crossing situation. This was brought up some time ago by Selectman Kyra, who expressed some concern about the, the intersection in terms of the safety situation there. It was during a meeting that Rep. Robertson had been before the board about another intersection on Route 38. And there was some question about the layout of the intersection, whether there was a left turn on green arrow. So I, here's a bird's eye view, if you will, of the intersection. Consulted with initially Jamie McGold, our DPW Operations Manager, and he had taken some photographs, which are included here, and John has brought them up. But it does indicate there is a green arrow, but it is a very short green arrow. Does not give a lot of time for the northbound folks in the left lane to take that left. And then beyond that, that, that is called a protected green, so to speak, so that people can make that turn without, with the expectation that the southbound traffic has a red and they should be able to do that safely. The balance of the time, which is quite frankly, the majority of the time, it's just a green light, which means it's permissive, suggesting that if you, if the, if the operator believes that the traffic is clear heading south, they can make the left. But as has been pointed out previously, it's oftentimes difficult to see beyond the car in the far, I guess would be their, their left lane into that other lane. So following up with Chief Desmond, he reached out to a representative at Mass DOT to take a look at the intersection and provide some stats. Came back that between 2014, August of 14 and July of 2020, there have been eight recorded accidents. And I say recorded because I suspect there have been others that, that may not have been officially recorded. But six of those were angle accidents, which would speak to the circumstance of someone trying to take that turn while someone's coming down the southbound lane. There were some minor adjustments made to the timing, and it was referenced as stealing time from the southbound signal to create a bit more time, as I understand it, to make that left turn. It was pointed out that this intersection, from a queuing standpoint, is connected to the Richmond Street intersection, is also connected to the intersection down at Santander Bank. So that poses some issues in terms of, you know, making adjustments at one intersection has consequences in the other intersections. And it was also pointed out that, you know, the, the, one of the challenges here is that if the left turn lane was to be a dedicated left, which I don't believe anyone has suggested yet, but that creates traffic implications and likely backups. So it, it is going to be a challenging situation, I think, to, to address this. But that is where things stand at the moment. Next is, under Correspondence is a memo from me with regard to the status on the upcoming budget, operating budget. I note that I met with the department heads, general government department heads this past week and provided them with the guidelines and instructions for submitting operating budgets. Those budgets are due by December 4th. And essentially, the theme, if you will, is hold the line with respect to fiscal '22. I don't expect new programs unless there's funding from grants or other sources. I think there's still uncertainty about what will happen in fiscal '21. Certainly, I think the legislature is closer on a budget. But, you know, right now, we're under the expectation that, that we will be level funded for fiscal '21. I think the real challenge is going to be fiscal '22, given the money that the state has had to spend on COVID and just the loss in revenues on their end. They've gone through some of their rainy day fund. I fully expect that in '22, we're going to see cuts to our Our uh to Chapter Seventy, Education Aid and the Unrestricted General Government Aid. So. I think we need to brace for that. Um you know, we are in a. Good position, uh given the reserves that we have, but. You know, it remains to be seen uh what will play out there. Uh next is a uh a letter. To uh Gary Bartlett from the, who is the uh potentate from the Shriners. I just wanted to read this uh. Into the record if I could. Uh and it uh reads as follows. The Board of Selectmen, the Town Clerk, and I wish to expand, uh extend our deepest gratitude. And thanks to you for the tremendous generosity offered to the town of Wilmington by hosting the two thousand twenty presidential election. Over nineteen pandemic has impacted each of us, both personally and in wa- uh in the way we conduct business. Unfortunately, far too many. For far too many, this uh illness has had tragic consequences. Uh Town Clerk Christine Tuma Conway recognized early on that, given the restrictions imposed in response. To the pandemic and the expected turnout for the presidential election. The town's customary polling locations would not enable residents to cast their votes in a safe and expeditious manner. The size and accessibility of the auditorium and the parking availability proved to be the perfect solution. Uh to welcome residents to vote from all of our six voting precincts. Sheila Basette, Events Manager, was, as always, the epitome of an accommodating consummate professional. She worked with the Town Clerk and our public building staff to meet all of our needs. Additionally, we thank the Shriners for permitting access to the auditorium, not only on Election Day. But during the days leading up to the election for setup and the day following the election for final breakdown and moving of furniture. Use of the Shriners Auditorium was offered at no cost to the town. The L F O Shriners are guided by the principle of performing good deeds and helping others. Your assistance to the town is only one more example of this kind spirit. Words cannot fully express our appreciation for this act of kindness. Be safe. Uh and I just really want to, again, thank them for all of their effort and and also um. If I might uh just offer um some thanks to uh the various folks that were involved. Certainly. Uh Tina uh Conway for quarterbacking this whole event. Um all the details. Uh it's been. From my perspective, um. Uh extremely helpful. Uh that she's been the go-to person there. Uh her staff, Assistant Town Clerk Linda Golden. Uh Senior Clerk Beth Lassard. Uh they spent many nights, weekends, uh dealing with the. Uh early voting uh and making that accessible to people. Uh Recreation Staff was involved. I kind of called them our utility players. Karen Campbell, the Director. Uh Brett Sawin, our Program Coordinator, and Linda Cantor. Uh they stepped up, answered phone calls, uh. Helped with uh addressing the ballots. Uh Paula Looney, who uh scoped out the auditorium and and planned uh. Put put into um. Into pictures, if you will, what Tina had uh a vision for. Uh Joe Desmond, uh worked with Tina in developing the traffic flow. Uh and certainly all the workers, uh the volunteer, the workers that Tina recruited to. Help out this year was really a a major team effort. Uh next, under uh correspondence, just wanted to reference this uh press release, uh which was put out uh last week after we. Uh received word on the changes uh with respect to outdoor gathering. As everyone knows, um. We're once again having a Veterans Day uh event on Thursday um to honor our veterans. Uh unfortunately, I, you know, this year, as has been the case in so many other instances, uh. Uh the event is going to be curbed a bit in that um. The social gatherings, the numbers are limited. Uh to fifty. Um I've had the conversation with Lucy Maglia, the Director of Veteran Services, and. Uh so we agreed that it would be appropriate to put out a. A press release just noting that we appreciate everyone's uh support of the veterans. But given the circumstances, um we need to be mindful of the limitations set by the governor. I would just want to read in. Uh for the public to understand uh how they can access uh the services. Uh everyone present for the cer- uh ceremonies will be expected to wear a mask and socially distance. Uh Mr. Smaglia will have the ceremonies livestreamed through W C T V. Channel nine for Comcast subscribers and channel thirty-seven for Verizon subscribers. Uh those without cable may see the ceremonies via W C T V's Facebook page. At W W W dot Facebook dot com backslash Wilmington Community Television. The proceedings can also be accessed via W C T V dot org. And via the Veteran Services Facebook page at. W W W dot Facebook dot com backslash Wilmington M A V S. So again, we encourage you to um. To view that uh for Wednesday. Uh it is, as always, uh the eleventh day of the eleventh month, the eleventh hour. Uh and then we're on to Board to Consider.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. First Board to Consider item is the request of John Romano, the President of the Sons of Italy. To use the town common municipal parking lot on Sunday, December thirteenth, two thousand twenty, from nine thirty A M. To eleven A M. For the purpose of the drive by annual Members Children's Christmas Party. Entertainer motion?
Make the motion to accept.
Uh motion by Selectman Depalma. We have a second. We have uh. Selectman Kyra, Selectman Bendo and Selectman Omaoni are all unmuted, so. And ask that they be unmuted, please.
Thank you. I said, I'm try- I tried to make the motion. I would love to make second the motion. Thank you for unmuting me.
Okay, now that I'm. It's like we've only been doing this for eight months.
I couldn't unmute myself. John took it over.
All right, discussion. See none. Mr. Bender.
Hi.
Mr. Kyra.
Yes.
Mr. Depalma.
Yes.
Ms. Omaha.
Yes.
And I M E S. It's unanimous. Thank you. Next is the Board to Consider, another request from John Romano, the President of the Sons of Italy, to use the town common municipal parking lot. On uh it's um. Saturday, December twenty-sixth. From eight thirty, eight eight A M. To fourth P M. For the purpose of a blood draw. Uh it's actually um just. December twenty-sixth is um. Pardon me for a minute. So the the que- request is uh yes, for Saturday, December twenty-sixth.
I'll make that motion.
That's it.
A motion by Ms. Omaha and second by Mr. De Palma, Mr. De Palma for the discussion. See none. Mr. Bendo.
Hi.
Mr. Kyra.
Yes.
Mr. De Palma.
Yes.
Ms. Omaha.
Yes.
And I M E S. It's unanimous. Next is the Board to Consider, uh a request of the Wilmington Sons of Italy and Wilmington Band Parents to use the Swain School Parking Lot on Saturday, September eleventh. Two thousand twenty-one from seven A M. To five thirty P M. For the purpose of conducting a yard sale to raise funds. The rain date will be Saturday, Sep- uh September eighteenth. Mr. Hall, I know you had a conversation with Mr. Seega about these specific dates. Do you want to speak to them?
Uh yes, uh one of the concerns that uh that I expressed was, given that September eleventh of twenty-one will be. Uh the twenty-year anniversary of nine eleven, uh I suggested that it may be advisable to. Um e- either start the event later in the day or or perhaps pick another date entirely and. Uh he indicated that the uh group would like to. Uh use the eighteenth as the primary date. Uh for the event with a uh a rain date of the twenty-fifth. September twenty-fifth.
So I'd entertain a motion with those. Specific days, so Saturday, September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, with a rain date of Saturday, September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one. A motion by Mr. Bendo and Mr. Kyra. I'll take that as a second discussion. See none, Mr. Bendo. Mr. Kyra.
Yes.
Mr. De Palma.
Yes.
Ms. Omaha.
Yes.
And I M E S. It's unanimous. Next is the Board to Consider, the request of Deanna Di Glorio, President of the Wilmington Community Fund, to use a municipal parking lot on Saturday, April tenth, two thousand twenty-one. From nine A M. To twelve A. It's reads A M., but I presume that's P M. Uh unless it's a very long shredding event, for the purpose of a community shredding. It does actually read in the letter from nine uh to twelve A M., but um. Yeah, I believe that prior events have been for three-hour periods, so.
Yes.
So I would entertain a motion to approve the request. Running until uh noon on Saturday, April tenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Make a motion that we shred the time to noon.
Classic dad joke by Mr. Bendo. Good job, man. I'll entertain a second. If we can, somebody give me a second.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Bendo, seconded by Ms. Omaha, discussion.
Yeah, was that a joke? I didn't hear.
Decided to shred the time. Mr. Bendo, it's better if you tell a joke that you don't have to then explain later on.
Try to do better. I apologize. Need to shred the peak.
All right, so now, unless there's further discussion, and I really hope there's none. Mr. Bendo.
Hi.
Mr. Kyra.
Hi.
Ms. Omaha.
Yes.
And I M E S. It's unanimous. Next Board to Consider request is of Beth Rooney, Beth Rooney, the Wilmington uh W H S Football Touchdown Club Wilmington. To use the parking lot at the Fourth of July Building for the annual W H S Football Car Wash on Sunday, September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one. From nine A M. To twelve P M. On a rain date of Sunday until the third at two thousand twenty-one. I have a motion.
Second.
I'll make the motion.
Oh, sorry.
We're gonna have the motion by Ms. Omaha and. Seconded by Mr. De Palma.
What is happening to us tonight?
I know, it's this. Going long.
I think it's the, I think it's the I we're getting from Mr. Bendo. Couldn't help but laugh. Is there discussion on this motion? And the only, I I mean, I'm in favor of the car washes. The only thing is that I think we need to keep the same caveat. As we did with the other car washes that it, you know, depending upon um a water ban. So what we do, for one, we get, we should do for all.
Do you want to uh articulate that as an amendment?
Sure.
Okay, so.
Clean it off.
Mr. De Palma, we're gonna walk back your second that happened before the motion.
I would like to modify. I would like to amend my motion to include that there would be language stating that it's approved. Assuming there's no water ban or other restrictions that would prohibit the the ability for them to have the car wash on that date.
And I believe that came with the the town would be contacting them if that was were the case.
Correct.
Sure. So I will take that as the main motion, Ms. Omaha, that was seconded by Mr. De Palma. Is there any further discussion? See none, Mr. Bendo.
Hi.
Yes.
Mr. De Palma.
Yes.
Ms. Omaha.
Yes.
And I M E S. It passes unanimously. Next and final Board to Consider item is executing the lease agreement for with new singular wire wireless P C S L L C. To construct, install, and operate, upgrade, and maintain a personal communications. Uh Mr. Hall, perhaps you can supplement this, but uh basically, uh the short end of it is that. Uh the water tower that we replaced uh in and uh. Basically, as you're uh looking up at the Kelly Hill. Yeah, N S I M. You um, this is for a a personal communication system or essentially a cell tower. Uh it's a ten-year uh lease that would run uh and. Uh it does have an escalation clause as to how much will be paid to the town um in the course of. The lease. Uh if I can just find it quickly. It starts out with uh forty-five thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars. Uh in year one, it is uh gradually increases two point five percent each year, ending in year ten. At fifty-six thousand eight hundred and forty dollars and seventy-five cents. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. De Palma.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bendo, discussion.
It's just a question. Is this um. Uh a renewed, uh we're renewing a a lease. Uh we've. We've had the cell tower up there before from the same. Same company, or is this brand new?
Yes, there's there's uh, well, it 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 is the company, and I think they may have gone through a corporate change, but. Uh we did have to go through a a procurement. Um. Uh but essentially, uh it turns out it's the same firm that has a uh a cell tower on the old tank. Uh and and the new tank that was constructed, you know, will will accommodate uh. The tower, and so the agreement uh was put together. Uh between Town Council and uh in discussions with their council.
So so this did go out to bid?
Yes.
For anyone to to put in for. Okay, thank you.
Hi, and I would just note, um, so the the agreement, it it does not need to be. Uh signed in um in hand, so to speak. Uh Board members can either use DocuSign or sign it in hand. I would just suggest that you. Check in with Beverly as to how you want to handle that. Uh offline.
Further discussion. See none will call for the vote. Mr. Bendo.
Hi.
Mr. Kyra.
Yes.
Mr. De Palma.
Yes.
Ms. Omaha.
Yes.
And I'll make unanimous passes. Uh item number twelve is a Board to Consider item that was approving the request to conduct a Santa Parade that was handled during our appointments. Uh our seven fifteen appointment with Officer Ferber, so it's. Like unanimously voted. We're now on to public comments. I believe we have at least one caller. Is that correct, Mr. Tony?
Uh, that's correct. The caller has not indicated they wish to speak yet. Uh, just a reminder, you can. Uh he has now indicated he wishes to speak.
All right. You're just asking to identify yourself with your name and address.
It's star six to unmute yourself.
Good evening. Good evening. Ethan Sawyer, fifty-eight Lawrence Street.
Good evening, Mr. Sawyer. How are you?
I'm doing well, thank you. Um first, I just wanted to say um thank you for kind of bumping the um. Public comment back towards the end of the meeting. I definitely understand why. You were trying to open it up to be available to more people. Um but it definitely helps to be able to participate. In in the actual meeting by having it at the end, so I I do appreciate that. Then I just wanted to say that I was curious to know. If we know how much money the the town of Wilmington is still waiting on to be reimbursed by the state for the high school. I know the M S B A website still shows three million one hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars. As their estimate remaining to be paid to Wilmington. I mean, the high school was finished five years ago, so I'm just kind of wondering why, why we're still waiting on all that money. Um, because I know just to carry, I assume, some debt associated with having to pay for the construction. There's probably a lot of interest that we've paid out over that time.
Uh the, so I can.
Mr. Sawyer, what are you, you have another comments? Why don't you uh let us know and uh we'll try and take them up uh once you're you're finished.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Um and then I I guess that. And sort of one of the other concerns that I have has to do with, you know, just moving forward. I know we're looking for the O P M. For the new town hall. I know the estimate um for the cost on it was about thirty million dollars for the construction. I know that the O P M, one of the jobs they have is to hammer out the details of what that really is going to cost. Um, you know, I kind of voiced my concerns about the timing of it before the coronavirus and. Now I think even more so, it's not really a good time for us to move forward with that. Um and I know there was very few people who were able to make the town meeting. I know that I couldn't make it because of the. Um changes surrounding, having to. Not being able to do it when it was originally scheduled and um. So I'm I I'm hoping that we'll have an opportunity, that there's some way to reconsider this before. Um we spend a million dollars on the um. O P M, the project manager, and then the subsequent vote. Um, especially considering all the, the needs that we have with the schools. And some of that brought to light, again, just with the air quality testing and um. The need for a substation and what we've got going forward with the senior center. Um, and, and then the only last comment they had is just that I was glad to hear that the MBTA board does permit more than. One appointee to the bo, to the board, so um, I know that former Selectman McCoy had. Sort of voiced his uh hope and desire to continue to serve on that board, and I know that the board had sent him a. Thank you letter for the service that he done previously, so I'm hoping that maybe he'll be asked to continue his service on that board. Um, I think those, and those are really the only comments that I had tonight. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Sawyer, I think I'll, I'll actually take those in reverse order. I, I believe in Miss Omaroni, please correct me if I'm wrong, but. Uh, the point that you were able to clarify from the MBTA advisory board is that uh, each community would only be permitted one member.
Correct.
But the votes were weighted by.
Correct.
MBTA users.
Right, one person can exercise those votes, one person is authorized to exercise those votes. So I would, as the board's appointee, if I'm not available, it would either be Mr. Hull or you, Mr. Eaton, as the chair.
Okay, thank you. Uh, regarding uh the, your comments you had with the town hall slash school administration O P M. Uh, building in, in town hall, or the town meeting attendance, uh, that did vote on, I think it was just shy of three hundred residents that came out. Uh, to town meeting. I certainly recognize and appreciate some of the other concerns that you identified and. Uh, towards that end, we are moving forward, uh, and I've had a call, uh, with Mr. Hull. Uh, Mr. Hooper, uh, Dr. Brands, Ms. Bryson of the school committee. Uh, and uh, Mr. Regero, the Assistant Superintendent of. Uh, Administration and Finance of the School Departments with the MSBA on the need for. Uh, our new elementary schools. We did discuss that in generalities at our previous meeting, but certainly the town is moving forward and trying to. Uh, address uh our aging elementary schools. Uh, Mr. Bendel gave uh an update and has been giving updates as to the senior center O P M process, as we have identified. Uh, the firm that is gonna be taking uh over from here as um, we move forward with that. Uh, certainly, we have a number of capital projects that are outstanding right now that we are moving forward on. Uh, and uh, well, um, certainly everyone is entitled to their opinion as to what should be. Uh, priority items and what should not be. Uh, when the time comes, you certainly have the opportunity to attend town meeting and then. Uh, ultimately vote on what the town goes forward with. Uh, Mr. Hull, I, I wanted to allow you uh the opportunity and, and possibly beg you to uh explain the. High school reimbursements uh issue with the MBTA, uh, as there were no present members of the board that were here back when. Uh, the um, that process was finalized.
That's right, so uh, when the uh, uh, school was constructed back in two thousand fifteen. Uh, you know, there's, there was uh, a, as a matter of course, gonna be a period of time for. Uh, closeout. Uh, unfortunately, one of the issues that uh remained open uh for. Um, actually until uh last year, in fact, was. Uh, the issue uh stemming from the gym, gymnasium floor. Uh, you'll recall that um shortly after the building opened in February of fifteen, it was by the summer of. Fifteen, uh, George Hooper uh identified some concerns. We had numerous meetings. Uh, throughout that period of time, and they really extended into um, uh, well beyond two thousand fifteen. Uh, you know, initially being told by our. Uh, our architect and contractor that uh, the, the floor needed to just uh. Uh, that nature needed to take its course and that things would uh square away. Ultimately, that. Never did happen, and uh, we began discussions with the various parties about. Uh, reaching a resolution, uh, and unfortunately, um, you know, between the back and forth, it took place. Uh, with meetings between the town and representatives from the other parties. Uh, it wasn't until. Uh, last year, uh, that it was ultimately uh settlement was reached. Uh, so there could not be any closeout until uh, you know, any. Uh, issues like that were resolved. Uh, in the meantime, there were uh staffing changes with. Uh, the O P M uh N V five, uh, and so there were dis- discussions uh. Started the early part of this year, two thousand uh twenty, and in fact, in the last uh few weeks, we've had. Further discussions about uh making sure we have all the final. Requests for uh reimbursement. Uh, we have one, one more opportunity to make a request for reimbursement. Uh, there's been, in fact, I think it was in the last week or two, uh, conversations between uh the O P M. Uh, Brian Perry and myself, uh, George Hooper and others, uh, to confirm the final request for reimbursement. And once that is submitted, uh, then we can begin the closeout process, which uh requires an audit. Uh, that is uh, the MB, uh, the uh, MS, uh, MSBA is involved in. Uh, so it's, it, it, there's no question, it's taken some time. Um, and it will get closed out, the three million dollar number. Uh, I, I, I don't believe that is actually the, the number. I know the number that is reflected on our. Um, uh, on our uh free cash uh. Uh, form that comes back from the uh Department of Revenue is something in the order of one point five million, but I'll have to. Uh, confirm uh which number is the most accurate, but long and the short of it is, uh, we are working to. Finalize a, a one last request for reimbursement, and then we will begin the uh closeout and audit process.
Thank you, Mr. Hull. Mr. Tony, do you have any other uh members of the public for public comment?
Mr. Chair, we do not.
Alright, I'll give it a minute. Mr. Tony, do you have anybody reading to speak?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
Okay, at this point, I'll consider public comments closed, and we'll move forward with announcements. Any announcements? Mr. Bendel, sorry, we uh, trying to keep up with the changes in the screens. Uh, Mr. O'Neil, if you don't mind, unmuting Mr. Bendel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John, uh, very briefly, Mr. Chair, I don't wanna step on your toes, but I do wanna. Uh, compliment you and uh specifically our Veteran Service Office, who put together a very fitting tribute. Uh, yesterday, uh, in, in, by the way of um dedicating one of our streets to Sergeant George Veloza and his family. So I was honored to join you, uh, uh, the Veloza family, uh, members of our state delegation, Wilmington Police Department, V F W, American Legion. Quite a few people involved, and uh, I thought you, your speech was excellent, Mr. Chairman, and uh, it was a very fitting tribute. For George Veloza, who's a Purple Heart recipient from World War Two, uh, and if you're not familiar, it's off of Salem Street. Down McDonald Road, and at uh, at the tail end, you'll walk in to uh drive into North Wilmington Estates. And uh, so I wanna also give them a shout out, and also longtime Wilmington resident Steve Lawrenson, who. Was involved with the development, who had come up with the idea to have the street named after Sergeant Veloza, so. It was a, it was a great uh, uh honoring of his family, and his name will be there forever. I thought it was a great event, so I want. To uh, thank all those who made it possible, specifically Lou, Mike, and Patty from our Veteran Service Office, and uh. Can't uh let it go by without uh giving a plug to the Veteran Day Ceremony, as was mentioned earlier. And I just wanna conclude by, once again, thanking all of our veterans and uh. Really appreciate those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bendel. Anything else for not, uh, announcements?
I just wanted to echo what Selectman Bendel just said, to thank the veterans and their families, and uh also to thank Lou and his staff for, for putting together a virtual event. Since we can't all gather in, in person on Wednesday to um have found a way to accommodate that, so we can still honor the veterans and their families on that day.
Yeah, I too uh, agree and echo the comments from uh Mr. Bendel and Mrs. Omaroni. Um, Lou always does a fantastic uh job. I know he does it from the heart. Um, and um, looking forward to once again honoring our veterans, and, and I believe that they, they're going to be um. Uh, also dedicating the new monument, um, that's uh for those uh killed in action. Uh, I don't know if there's more that you wanna add to it, uh, Mr. Hull. Um, on, on that, uh, on that morning, so.
Uh, only to say that that uh was an, an effort, again, uh, through uh an Eagle Scout, Liam Prigmore. Uh, under uh Lou's able guidance, uh, they'll be doing the unveiling uh as part of the ceremony on uh. On Wednesday, and uh, the actual um ceremony itself will be presented from. Uh, the side of the, uh, of the flag opposite the side that we typically. Um, gather on, just because that is where the uh, uh, the. Memorial will be um, uh, will be established, unveiled.
Yeah, and once again, thank you to the Eagle Scout for, for uh doing that project and taking that on. Thank you.
Mr. De Palma?
Uh, I'd like to come, uh, compliment Lou. He's known throughout the state. When you mentioned W- Wilmington, they say, hey, you know Lou? Uh, it's an honor to have him representing our veterans and helping our veterans in the town and all around the state. Uh, and I just wanna congratulate him as always.
Thanks. New business. Alright, I do actually have some new business. I did receive an email, or uh, we have, uh, Mr. Hull received an email late last night from. Uh, Ms. Jennifer Bolanos, and I'll just read it. Good mo, good morning, Mr. Hull, presuming that you don't check your email late at night with questions from how you do. I'm writing on behalf of the Wer One Wilmington Board, we would like to request permission to place signs advertising Wow's Virtual Festival Trees on the commons. Event will take place during the first week of December. Thank you, Jennifer Bolanos. Uh, I just, we wanted to recognize that uh, the Virtual Festival Trees is coming up uh very shortly. Um, and we're not meeting again until November twenty third, so I did wanna at least put it on the table now to. Um, prove uh the authorization of two signs on Church Street and Middle Sixth Avenue, uh, signs of the common. Advertising, uh, Wow's Virtual Festival Trees.
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
Motion on, Mr. Kyra, we have a second. Seconded by Mr. De Palma, discussion. Seeing none, we'll call for the vote, Mr. Bendel.
Aye.
Mr. Kyra?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Miss Omaroni?
Yes.
I am a yes, it is unanimous. Uh, Mr. Hull, important dates.
Uh, important dates, we have uh through December fourth, curbside collection of yard waste. Uh, November eleventh is, of course, the Veterans Day ceremonies, uh, Town Common eleven AM, town offices will be closed. November twelfth, brush drop off Old Main Street, eight AM to two PM. Uh, the fourteenth of November, dr- uh, brush drop off Old Main Street, nine AM to four PM. November eighteenth, brush drop off Old Main Street, eight AM to two PM. Uh, November twenty first, brush drop off Old Main Street, nine AM to four PM. Uh, next selectmen's meeting is November twenty third. Uh, it'll be a virtual meeting at seven PM. Uh, also that evening is part of the agenda, discussion of local property tax policy with reference to classification for the fiscal twenty. Twenty one uh year, uh, again, at board of selectmen's meeting, this will be virtual, seven fifteen PM. November twenty fifth, brush drop off Old Main Street, eight AM to two PM. November twenty eighth, brush drop off Old Main Street, nine AM to four PM. November twenty sixth is Thanksgiving Day, town offices closed. Uh, town offices are also closed on Friday, the twenty seventh, uh, and then two more brush drop offs, uh, December second. Uh, eight AM to two PM, and December fifth, nine AM to four PM.
Alright, lastly, our salute service, uh, I wanna recognize Robert Oliveri, retired major in the United States Air Force, and Henry DiOrio, retired chief. The United States Coast Guard. They are sergeants-at-arms for our, all of our veteran ceremonies here in town. And they're both individually very involved in our community as well, as well as the veteran community here. Uh, I do hope that you uh are all able to uh either attend. Either in person, uh, or are able to watch in W C T V, our Veterans Day ceremonies this Wednesday at the eleventh hour of the eleventh day. The eleventh month, as we uh salute all the, the men, women, and the families that were sacrificed uh for our country. So with that, I will entertain motion adjourned.
Motion, I'll move to adjourn.
I was worried we weren't gonna get one for a second.
Well, I, I think I've been the one to do it the last four meetings, so it's starting to be a trend.
Alright, well, usually the last couple of meetings have gone about three hours, so if you wanna wait another ninety minutes, we can do that. But I'm gonna take this motion with Miss Omaroni and seconded by Mr. De Palma. Mr. Bendel.
Yes.
And Mr. Kyra?
Aye.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Miss Omaroni?
Aye.
I will make it unanimous. Good night, everyone.
Good night, thank you.